Good evening and welcome to this, the November 5th, 2025, meeting of the Lower Makefield Township Order Supervisors Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Start off with the roll call. Supervisor Lewis?
Present.
Supervisor Ross?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Present.
And Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
All present and accounted for. All right. Next up, we have community announcements, item four. Reminder during this portion, excuse me, of the agenda, residents and youth organizations may call in to make a special announcement, or contact the township at admin@lmt.org to request a special announcement be added to the agenda. The 2025-2026 deer hunting season has started. All areas being hunted are properly posted. If you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to the township at admin@lmt.org. Lower Makefield Township will be hosting an American Red Cross Blood Drive on Friday, November 7th, from noon to 5:00 p.m., right here in the main meeting room at 1100 Edgewood Road. The township, along with Yardley Borough, will be hosting an e-waste recycling event, offering township and borough residents the opportunity to responsibly recycle obsolete electronics. This event will take place in the pool at LMT parking lot, located at 1050 Edgewood Road, on Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. For information or to register, please visit our website calendar@lmt.org. The Environmental Advisory Council, along with Penn Environment's Zero Waste Program, will present on single-use plastic bags on Saturday, November 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00, right here in the main meeting room at 1100 Edgewood Road. The township, in partnership with the Veteran's Square Foundation, is hosting the 19th Annual Veterans Parade and Commemorative Ceremony on Saturday, November 8th, at 1:00 p.m. It's rain or shine. The parade will begin near the intersection of Edgewood Road and Long Anchor Lane, and proceed to Veteran's Square Monument at the corner of Edgewood Road and Heacock Road. Also, for those of you that were out and about yesterday, Tuesday was the election day. Just want to congratulate all the winners and all those who participated in Election Day. Not everybody won, but they still put in a good effort, so good for them. And I guess as a reminder to everyone that did win, the real work begins when you, when you, isn't during the campaign, it's when you actually start with office, so get ready to work hard. But we're excited for our two newest members to join us too come January. Any other supervisors have any announcements or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to throw a shout out to the black-capped chickadee, the November bird of the month. Thank you.
That's also the main state bird, so I grew up learning all about the black-capped chickadee. Any other announcements? All right. That being said, we will move on to item number five, which is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have a comment on something that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come up to the dais, state your name, whether or not you're a Lower Makefield Township resident, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. If there are a bunch of folks with similar comments on similar, similar subject, we ask that you try not to repeat yourself. And after all that, if you have a comment, please come up.
Hello, supervisors. My name is Alan Dresser. I live at 1907 Lindbergh Drive, and I'm vice chairman of the Environmental Advisor Council. And I thought tonight it would be appropriate to mark or acknowledge an anniversary, because exactly one year ago today was a 2024 general election. And while I didn't like most of the results of that election, there was one outcome I did like, and that was the Lower Makefield Township Open Space Referendum. It asked voters whether the township should borrow up to $15 million for the purposes of preserving open space, and it passed. Boy, did it pass. The yes votes, 15,112. No votes, 6,911. So that meant 70% of the voters voted yes. And I tell you, there aren't very many referendums you'll get that gets 70% or more of the vote, so. That was a message, and the support was widespread throughout the township. There are 15 precincts in the township, and every one of them, it passed by at least a two-to-one ratio. So there was support all over. And I think there's good reasons it got so much support. We've all noticed a lot of open space being lost to development in the last few years. And there are, they may not happen, but there's always Torbert Farm, 108 acres, turning into a housing development, and then Shady Brook Farm, that might end up getting developed, so there are things out there. So that's why there is concern. And it's been one year since passage of this referendum, and none of this money has been spent yet. And I understand it's difficult to negotiate with landowners and get, try to get them to sell their land or put a conservation easement on, so that's understandable. But I will say, on behalf of the 70% of voters who voted for preservation of open space, we hope you don't forget about this issue.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Dresser. I, all I'll say at this point, because we can't talk about certain things, is that we aggressively, we are aggressively looking and hoping for some good news in the not-too-distant future for you. Me too. Any other public comment? Anyone online or on the phone? Thank you. With that, I'll move to item number six, which is a presentation from Strategic Solutions regarding the Pennsylvania DCED Strategic Management Planning Program, Step One and Step Two findings. Mr. Kratcher, did you want to give any intro here?
Sure, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public. With us virtually today is Kyle DeShong from Strategic Solutions, and Cara Nicoletti from Mayor Dusel, who's a partner or subconsultant of Strategic Solutions. This is a topic of conversation that's been ongoing. It's something that's been discussed, I think, over the past two years. It's a program that is facilitated through the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development, and at its core, it's a, it's a multi-year financial and operational planning program. And so the first two steps of that process focus more on the financial. So again, our consultants are here this evening to discuss those first two steps in the process. Step one, which is really looking at historic financial performance to determine overall trends. And then step two is more on the financial modeling or projection side of things. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over, I guess, to Kyle, if that's okay with the chair, to start their presentation.
The only thing I'll add is, you know, over the, we have our upcoming budget meetings for the 2026 budget, and this is great timing to hear this analysis just prior to having those public conversations on the budget, because I feel it can inform that discussion, some of the bigger picture items. But with that, I'll take it back to you guys.
Great. Well, well, thank you all. We have a lot to cover, so I'll jump in. I want to check, are the slides being shared in the room? We can't see them online, so I just want to make sure first.
Not yet. We, we see the two of you at the moment.
Okay. Well, if we can go ahead and, and pull those up, I'll, I'll sort of kick us off, just to build a little bit on what, what Dave was saying. But so first of all, good evening on, on behalf of the entire Strategic Solutions team. I just want to thank, obviously, the Board of Supervisors, the township staff, as well as members of the public for the opportunity to present this evening's update and share findings thus far from the Strategic Management Planning Program process. You'll hear us say "stamp" a lot, that's kind of the shorthand vernacular for it. And like Dave said, this evening, we're really focusing on the results of steps one and two, which form the foundation of the overall plan. So if we flip to the next slide, please. So agenda night is pretty straightforward. We'll begin with just a brief introduction on the project team, and just a little bit on the overall approach to the stamp project, or the overall stamp process, and then pass things off to Mar Disel and Cara to share some of the findings from the financial condition assessment and the financial trends analysis. And then to build on what Board Chair was saying, talk about some of the key takeaways and 2026 budget considerations. So next slide, please. So quickly, I just first introduce myself. I'm Kyle DeShong. I'm a planner, as well as a data and policy analyst, that's been kind of involved throughout this project with Strategic Solutions. Like I said, Cara Nicoletti's on the call, who's the CPS CPA, excuse me, that's been leading this analysis. But this entire team is kind of a team of local government experts with different focuses or a different lens. So whether that be management, public safety, IT, or the financial side, this group has really been collaborating, along with a really effective partnership with township staff that we appreciate to pull together the findings from tonight, as well as the findings that you'll see in future presentations. So next slide, please. And so, so Dave touched on some of this, but the stamp program is really designed and managed by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And at its core, the goal is to strengthen the financial position of municipalities. So that's why steps one and two that we're talking about tonight really form the foundation of, of this project. So that'll be a financial condition assessment and financial trends analysis. In future phases, we'll talk about more of the management operations and, and an implementation plan that brings all of that together. But to really get into the meat of this thing, on the next slide, I'll, I'll turn this over to Cara to start talking about the financial analysis that we've been working on.
So this slide here just gives you, again, a brief introduction to steps one and steps, steps two, the financial condition assessment and the financial trend analysis. Like Dave mentioned, like, like we mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, the financial condition assessment really is, is looking back at the last five years of the township's financial activities, looking for trends, analyzing the historical information. And then step two, the financial trend analysis, is where we take all that information that we learned in step one, the financial condition assessment, all of those trends that we identified, and we project out then what the financials would look like over the, over the next five years. So for 2025 to 2029, in the instance of, of this project, for Lower Makefield Township. But throughout these slides and throughout this presentation, I'll go into more detail about what we did for the financial condition assessment and the financial trend analysis. So first, we can start with step one, the financial condition assessment. Like I said, we looked back at the historical financial performance from 2020 through 2024. When we looked at that, the historical financial data, we looked at different sources, such as audited financial statements, trial balances, real estate tax reports, whatever financial information was available for 2020 to 2024, we used it and we analyzed it. We also had a lot of conversations with the township with, regarding what trends we were seeing, why we were seeing those trends, and just, just to get a background for what went on those past five years that led to those trends. So we looked at, when looking at the 2020 through 2024 financial information, we looked at revenues and expenses in particular. The largest revenue sources, we have listed in the orange, the orange square on, in the middle of the slide. But again, we, I'll go into more detail about these revenue sources on the later slides. Real estate taxes were the largest revenue source. They were around 79% of the revenues in the general fund. Real estate transfer taxes were, were the second largest of the taxes, around $1.8 million average for each, each year. Charges for services, I'll talk about the charges for services. They're a significant revenue source, but not huge compared to total revenues and the taxes that we also looked at. Licenses and permits, I'll talk about them later on in this presentation, and how they're declining due to industry changes. State shared revenues, and the increase in state shared revenues, and then the leaf, leaf assessment fees, I'll touch on as well. On the expense side, we also looked at the largest expenses within the general fund, so those expenses are summarized in blue on this slide. The largest expenses were personnel costs, and we, we looked at trends with personnel costs. We did see them steadily increasing over, over the years. We looked at capital project expenditures, what capital projects took place in the, in the past. We talked with the township about what capital projects took place, what they're expecting to take place in the future. And then lastly, we also looked at interfund transfers. Specifically, interfund transfers between all of the funds, but in particular, we wanted to see how those transfers were affecting the general fund. That's kind of the focus of this, this portion, this, this, the slides that I have here in this presentation. But then throughout the report, we do talk about transfers within all of the funds. Over to the right, you can see a summary of the fund balance activity that we saw. We did notice, and within the general fund, from 2020 through 2024, there was a decline in fund balance over the years, with the exception of ARPA, ARPA funding activity that was transferred into the general fund, which we have a slide about that, too. There were a couple of funds that carry negative fund balances, which we can talk about. The sewer sale proceeds trust fund is, is an important fund for the township, with a, which provides a strong reserve of around $27 million in revenue every, every year from, from those funds. And then the liquid fuels funds, fund also has, has a strong positive fund balance that can be used for road projects. And then can you skip to the next slide, please? So we can start talking about the, the revenue sources. I'll quickly try, try to summarize. I know we talked about them a little bit on the previous slide, but there's a little more information about all the significant revenue, revenue sources on the next couple of slides. So like I said, real estate taxes are the largest revenue source. They're around 79% of the tax revenue. They have, real estate taxes have, have slightly increased over the years. But what we, what we did notice when looking at the increase in real estate taxes is they weren't necessarily increasing at the rate that inflation, of inflation over the past five years. So you can see, I also included a table on this slide that shows the tax mileage over the last five years, so you can see what, what it looks, what that tax mileage was in the past. Real estate transfer taxes, like I mentioned, around $1.8 million each year over the past five years. That will fluctuate based off of real estate tax, real estate, real estate sales through each year. But around $1.8 million is the average that we saw over the, over the past five years. And then can you skip to the next slide, please? The next largest of the tax sources is the local services tax. What we saw was that it averaged around $400,000 from 2020 through 2024 each year. We didn't see large fluctuations in, in that, that tax over the years. Per capita taxes, listed below, averaged around $200,000. So significant revenue stream, not one of, one of, one of the largest, but still significant to point out. And then can you skip to the next slide? Charges for services also, also represent significant revenue sources. We included a chart on this slide that just gives you a breakout of what's included in the charges for service, services over the years, so you can see the trends. Building permits making up the largest portion of the charges for services, and mechanical permits being the second of the largest. Licenses and permits, we analyze the license, the license and permits revenues as well. The majority of those revenues relate to cable TV franchise fees. Unfortunately, what we have been seeing, and this is across the board for all cable TV franchise fees, is those revenues have, have, have been steady over the years, but are starting to decline in future years, in, in, in recent years because of streaming services, of people using streaming services instead of cable. So we did see some declines there. Then on the next slide. State shared revenues, the majority of the state shared revenues are, are related to the general municipal pension state aid program. Those have fluctuated over the years, ranging from Those have fluctuated over the years, ranging from around $500,000 to $700,000. The leaf assessments is the last of the revenue sources that I wanted to mention. We did see from 2023 to 2024, an increase in the leaf assessment revenue that was collected, and that's due to an increase in the fee that was charged from $75 per lot to $95 per lot. So there was an increase in from 2023 to 2024 related to the leaf assessments. So this next slide gives you a detail of some of the significant expenses that we looked at as part of step one. Like I mentioned, personnel costs are the most significant of the expenses for the township, which is which is common for local governments. Personal personnel personnel costs are driven by the number of the employees and the wage rates. What we saw from looking at personnel costs over the past five years is that the employee count have remained pretty stable over the years with the exception of seasonal workers experiences, some increases in in current years. But what we're seeing is the expenses have increased due to rising wages that have that are being paid to to employees. And this is consistent with what we're what we're seeing everywhere. Governments keep trying keeping up with the increase in wages. So that's very common, what what we're seeing. Capital projects is the second largest of the expenses that we looked at. When looking at the general fund, it's not historically been a significant portion of the general fund expenses. But we did still look at all of the other funds as well when performing this analysis to see what capital projects were being paid for by those funds as well. And if there was any need, any impact on the general fund where the general fund had to cover other costs for some reason, or transfer funds to to those funds that were paying for capital projects, we looked at that and we analyzed that. But yeah, in the general fund, capital projects aren't a significant portion of the general fund expenses. Lastly, on the expense side, we looked at transfers into the general fund and out of the general fund. And this is significant when the significant transfers that we noted when looking at transfers over the past couple of years were that the the general fund was needed to transfer funds to sup to supplement operating deficits and in other funds over the years. The general fund has been used used to pay debt service in prior years or just or to create reserves to be used for future cap future capital projects as well. So you can see on the first table on this slide, just gives a summary of the X, the transfers out of the general fund over the past five years. So you can see where the general, the the funds that the transfers, the funds transferred out to are listed to the to the left. So you can see where significant transfers have been going. And then on the table on the bottom of the slide, this is the transfers into the general fund. So in addition to looking at the transfers out, we also looked at transfers in and the reasoning behind the transfers in. And if there was the opportunity for those transfers in to take place again in future years, that would fund the general fund. So what we saw is especially 2022 is an important year to note. There were two significant transfers in to mention. The ARPA funding that was received, starting in 2022, $786,000 was transferred into the general fund from from the ARPA fund. And the sewer sale proceeds of $3 million was also transferred into the general fund. So that's important when looking at the trend with the fund balance over the past five years. Those transfers in had a significant impact on the trend then when looking at the fund balance. And the reason why fund balance didn't continue to decline from 2021 to 2022. So so next, you can actually see the fund balance over the past five years in the general fund. And like I mentioned, if you look so on the on the table that you can see on the slide, we included total revenues, total expenses, total transfers in, total transfers out. So this is all kind of a summary of the activity that I had talked about on the previous slides. But you can see then fund balance, the change in fund balance and the fund balance at the end of the year is at the bottom of the table. So from 2020 through 2020, 2020 to 2021, there was a slight decrease in fund balance. But then 2022, where those significant transfers in were for the ARPA funding and the sewer fund, the you can see that the the fund balance shot back up to to be significantly higher than it was in 2021. But then looking at 23 and 24, it's starting to decrease again just due to those significant transfers not taking place in future years. So the next couple of slides give you a brief snap snapshot snapshot of the other funds. Like I said, throughout this engagement, we took a deep look at the activity in all of the funds with the focus being on, but with the focus especially for this presentation being on the general fund and where the fund balance and the general fund ended up and where it will end up in the future. So I can quickly go through some of the other fund activities. But again, within the final report that that we're providing to the township, there's a lot of detail related to all of the activity in all of the funds other than just the general fund. So the capital reserve fund, you can see at the end of 2024, had fund balance of around $39,000. From talking with the township, the expectation is that this fund is going to close and be transferred to the special projects fund in future years. The bond fund, you can see had fund balance of around 4.1 million dollars, and this fund balance is restricted for future capital projects. The debt service fund is important because real estate taxes get a portion of real estate taxes are allocated to the debt service fund, and then that revenue is used to pay the debt service, the debt payments that the the township needs to make on an annual basis. So you can see there is a summary of the real estate tax mileage that does get allocated to the debt, did get allocated to the debt service fund over the years. After 2023, what we noted is that the amount being allocated to the debt service fund was large enough to cover the debt service payments without any other transfers from other funds being needed. Through conversations with the township throughout this project, what we did note is that in the future, there is the the need for the debt service fund to pay for the borrowing of of 15 of 15 million dollars for open space preservation purposes. So we do point out in the report to keep in mind that although the debt service fund is able, the amount of real estate tax that mileage that is allocated to the debt service fund currently is able to pay for the the debt service payments that the township currently needs to make each year. Keep in mind that 1.88 mils will be needed to cover the annual debt service obligation for this new debt that will be taking place in future years. The special projects fund is the next fund that we looked at. It has fund balance that fluctuates between the years just based off of the projects that are taking place each year. At the end of 2024, it had a negative fund balance of $362,000. So our recommendation is just close monitoring of that fund, making sure that it stays funded and has a positive fund balance. And the next slide, the sewer sales proceeds fund is that we we've already talked about this fund. This is the fund where the the proceeds from the sewer sale went. So it has a fund balance of around 27 million dollars and provides annual revenue distributions each each year to the general fund. And this is this is very, this fund is very important for revenue diversification and for just the funding of the general fund and general operations in future years. The roadway improvement fund was a new fund in 2024 that we looked at. There's a dedicated real estate tax tax mileage that goes to that fund now, starting in 2024. And it ended 2024 with around 200,000 in fund balance. The streetlight fund has steady revenues and expenses. We did see slight increases in expenses due to inflation, but has a pretty stable fund balance. The 911 memorial fund is the next next fund that we looked at. We did see at the end of 2024, it had a small negative fund balance. There is a cooperation agreement in place that had funded that fund up to 400, up to $40,000 annually over the past couple of years. The fire protection fund had positive fund balance of around $170,000. The hydrant fund had a positive fund balance of around $38,000. And again, we go into more detail about all of these funds within the report. So I'm just kind of pointing out the highlights of where these funds ended with their fund balance at the end of at the end of 2024. Parks and Recreation Fund is is one of the significant funds that we did look at the activity for. We did see that there were recurring deficits from capital projects and transfers that resulted in a negative fund balance at the end of 2024 of $58,000. So we were again closely monitoring this fund is important for the township. The parks and recre, the park and recreation fee in Lou fund had a pos, had a strong positive fund balance of around $800,000. And this is coming from developers' fees with those funds intended to be used for maintenance and capital projects in future years. This next slide gives a little more detail about the Parks and Recreation Fund and the charges for services that are within that fund. So the chart up at the top of the slide just gives you a breakout for 2024 of what's included in charges for services. So you can see the 45% and the 33%, those are the two largest of the charges for services, and those make up the athletic program fees and the summer camp fees, which are important to know that those make up the majority of the charges for services each year. I also included a little bit of information about a breakout of the athletic program fees down below from 2022 for 2022, 23, and 24. So you can see of that 45% what fees are actually making up and what athletic programs are actually making up the majority of the revenue that's being generated. So the majority of that revenue is coming from the Yardley Makefield soccer soccer program and the lower Makefield football program. Also, starting in 2024, there's the Pensbury Athletic Association fee of around $85,000, which is expected to continue in future years. And something to keep in mind with these athletic program fees and then also the summer camp fees, which I did include it within this slide, there's some a detail about the number of participants, the amount that is charged to these to these families for the summer camp fees. The it's important to keep in mind that these fees that are being charged to the residents and to the participants in these programs are used to pay for the cost of those programs and the salaries and the any expenses for running those programs. So then this next slide just gives you the detail of a couple more funds. The traffic impact fund has positive fund balance of around $213,000. The Regency Bridge Fund, you can see revenues and expenses for that fund had a positive fund balance of around $155,000. The tree fund was around $322,000. And then if you can go to the next slide, the liquid fuels fund has a has a very strong positive fund balance of around 683,000, which is important for the township to look at when planning any future road projects or when in in budgeting in the future. What what projects can be paid for by this liquid fuels fund with that significant fund balance? The ambulance rescue fund also had a significant or had a positive fund balance of around $14,000. On the next slide, road machinery, the Patterson Farm and the Sidewalk Lou fund, Fee and Lou fund all had positive fund balances as well of 110,000, 4,000, and 82,000. And then we can skip to the next slide. So now that I've gone through step one, the financial condition assessment, like I said, we looked at the past five years, analyzed trends. We looked at fund balance for all of the funds. And and again, within the report, there's a lot of detail about those revenue sources that we talked about, the expenses that we talked about, and really each individual fund and the activity of each fund. But what I included on these slides was kind of just like a snapshot of where all of these funds ended up at the end of 2024. But now we can move on to the financial trend analysis. So this was step two of the of the engagement. After we looked at the trends for the past five years and got a good understanding of the trends and the reasoning for the for the trends, we then took everything that we learned from that financial information and use that to forecast out what we were, what the next five years would look like. So on these slides, there's kind of a quick summary of what what you'll find then on the next on the next couple of slides for the revenue projections. Again, we can talk about this more as we get to those slides. We didn't see much real estate tax growth coming in future years due to the mileage that's already being charged to the residents and the trends with the assessment and the the real estate tax assessment assessed value. Real estate transfer taxes, like I said before, averaged around 1.8 million dollars annually, expecting that to stay pretty consistent. The leaf assessment had already increased in 2024. The expectation is that it's going to stay pretty consistent now in future years. Other revenue sources, again, we projected them at either modest growth or flat rates, unless if there was something significant that we discussed with lower Makefield management that they brought to our attention that we would need, we we would need to know about. On the expenditure projection side, again, like I said before, personnel's costs are the most significant of the expenses. They are, we are expecting that they will continue to rise significantly. So that was taken into account when looking at the projections. Operating expenses, we increased with annual inflation around 3%. And then capital expenses, we which we'll talk about later on in this presentation, we you, we included any capital projects that were known and budgeted by the township whenever when we were preparing these forecasts. But there isn't necessarily a multi-year capital improvement plan that lists out all the capital projects that are going to be taking place over so many years. So we didn't necessarily include a lot of capital expenditures in future years, other than what was budgeted for 2025. So the risks you can see over to the right, to the over to the right, we'll we'll talk about these as we go through other through the other slides, projected general fund deficit by 2027 and negative fund balances and multiple funds is what we saw when looking at these forecasted numbers. And then the opportunities, we have a slides about the opportunities, so we can just skip past these for now, and and we'll go through those when we get to the slides. So if you can skip to the next slide, the real estate tax revenue projections are shown on this slide. We we estimated around 0.65% annual increase in real estate taxes with also the mileage allocation to the different funds staying consistent over the years. So you can see the projected real estate tax revenue over the next five years is listed on this slide with not with increasing, but not by a significant amount. On the next slide, again, transfer tax will say around 1.8 million dollars. The leaf assessment, like I mentioned, has already had already increased. So we're, we were estimating that it would stay pretty consistent over the next five years. Charges for services and permits, we took a look at the budget and we we talked with management and determined that charges for services and permits were going to remain pretty stable over the next five years. So there wasn't much of an increase that was anticipated that we factored into these projections. On the next slide, the expenses, like I mentioned, personnel costs, we took a look at collective bargaining agreements or what other approved salary increases that the township had in place for personnel costs. What we're expecting with healthcare costs trends over the next five years to factor the personnel cost, the increase in personnel costs through 2029. Capital projects, like I mentioned, because there's no capital improvement plan, we included the capital projects that the township was aware of and budgeted. we included the capital projects that the township was aware of and budgeted at the time of us preparing these forecasted numbers. But there's not a significant amount of capital projects included in these numbers. Also taking into account if there are significant capital projects that are coming up, would come up in future years that the township could obtain grant funding for those capital projects or issue debt for those capital projects, to pay for those capital projects as well. And then lastly, operating expenses, like I mentioned, increased around three percent annually is what we use for the operating expenses. So on the next slide, we've listed some of the potential risks. So these are some of the significant items that we noted when preparing these forecasts. When looking at the general fund, what we saw was, starting in two thousand and twenty seven, with revenues being, with expenses being higher than revenues and the rising costs, especially related to personnel, we, we did note that the general fund will have a negative fund balance starting in two thousand and twenty seven without any other corrective actions happening. Also, negative fund balances, like I mentioned before, are in, within the other funds other than the general fund are important for the, for the township to be monitoring and making sure that if the general fund is needed to fund these negative fund balances as well, that that's being budgeted and taken into account. The Sewer Sale Trust Fund is important for the township and it, it will generate a little over a million dollars annually of revenue that can be, be transferred over to, to the general fund to cover operations. So that's important to keep in mind that that funding is there and that revenue source is there. As we were talking with management, we, we kind of, we had a few discussions with them related to some debt revenue diversification initiatives that I wanted to point out on this slide that are important for you to keep in mind when looking at the two thousand and twenty six budget or in, in the future where your significant revenue streams are. So what, what we learned is there are a couple of significant events that have, have taken place or are going to be taking place in future years that, that will help generate additional revenue for the township. The amusement tax was enacted and that will raise around fifty thousand or five hundred thousand dollars annually, which, which is important for the township. The parking tax was also enacted, which works in conjunction with the amusement tax as a safeguard to prevent operators from avoiding the amusement tax through, tax through parking charges. So both of those were enacted at the same time. The stormwater utility fee, my understanding is it's not fully en- enacted yet. But the potential, there's a strong potential for this to be coming up in the, in the near future with the creation of a stormwater utility fee. That could then, that fee could then shift up to two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars of expenses into the stormwater utility fund that would then be paid for by that fee. And then again, keeping in mind, like we mentioned, the, around a little over a million dollars that will be coming from the Sewer Sale Trust Fund every year as well is another different revenue source, new revenue source, other than the taxes that we talked about on the previous slides. The next slide, I think the next two slides will list a couple of opportunities and, and takeaways from, from this, from this project that, that we wanted to point out as ways for the township to get ahead of the potential for a negative fund balance, starting in two thousand and twenty seven in the general fund and for expenses exceeding revenues in future, to continue exceeding revenues in future years. Advocating for countywide reassessment could significantly increase the assessed tax base. If the millage rate is staying consistent and not increasing, the only way for the real estate tax revenue to increase would then be for the assessed tax base to increase. So advocating for a countywide reassessment, which has not happened in a, in a, in a long time, could help with that. If that countywide reassessment isn't addressed, we have a couple other, a couple other items listed on this slide. And I know there's going to be a lot more discussion, especially about the transition to a first-class township in the next presentation that we have in the next part of this project. But transitioning to a first-class township would increase the millage rate cap to thirty mils. So that would then make it so the township could increase the real estate tax, the, the real estate tax revenue. And also supporting the advocacy efforts for state ride, statewide legislative change to increase the millage rate for second-class townships could also open up additional taxation capability for the township. If that would change, then the township could charge more real estate tax as well to its residents. Another opportunity to keep in mind is the development of a multi-year capital. You know, I think, I'm sorry, do you mind going back one more slide? Thank you. The development of a multi-year capital improvement plan is important for the township to help with budgeting and to help know what projects are going to be coming down the pipeline and what projects the township will need to fund in the future. Again, along with that plan and the, the expenses that would be incurred by the township to, to, to pay those, to pay for those projects, it's important to keep in mind also where the revenue is coming from that would pay for those projects as well. So if there's a project that's coming up in the future is the, or grant that the township is also considering applying for, that could pay for it, or is there debt that would be issued that would pay for it? So keeping in mind when preparing the multi-year capital improvement plan, both sides, the revenues and the expenses related to that capital project is important. The other item that we wanted to mention is the implementation of earned income tax is, is another opportunity for an additional revenue stream for the township. It would, it would bring in a significant amount of revenues that are currently not being collected from township revenues, or from, from township residents, which could then align the, the, the types of taxes that the township charges with other municipalities and governments in Pennsylvania. So then on the next slide, we have included a couple of key takeaways and I'll, I'll quickly go through them because I know we've talked about a lot of them. The general fund sustainability is important, is an important takeaway. Keeping in mind, if nothing changes and our forecast, our, we are forecasting that the general fund will have negative fund balance by two thousand and twenty seven. Real estate tax limitations, currently the real estate taxes really can't increase much more as they are right now. So keeping that, keeping that in mind is important. The potential for the township to transition to a first-class township, again, we'll talk about this more in our next presentation and the next, the next steps in our report. But that's definitely an important key takeaway. Importance of capital planning, like I mentioned, is, is good for budgeting and knowing what capital projects are going to be coming up in the future. And then consider, the consideration of, of charging an earned income tax is just, is another revenue source that would diversify the revenue that's being brought into the township. Making sure that the township is in compliance with the fund balance policy is, is important for the township to consider. I know the fund, we, there's some information about the fund balance policy within the report. And I know the fund balance policy is on the newer side for the township. But so just monitoring fund balance, monitoring policy, making sure that you're in compliance is important. Managing the sewer sale proceeds, that, the, the around one point two million dollars that's coming from the Sewer Sale Trust Fund is, is an important item for the township to be aware of and to be monitoring. The monitoring of personnel costs, those are the most significant of the expenses, like I mentioned. So the monitoring of those costs and being aware of where those costs are going to be in future years is important. Along with monitoring of the negative fund balance too, there are multiple funds that had negative fund balance. So what is the impact of the negative fund balance on the other funds or what funds are needed to support those funds with negative fund balance? Pension and long-term obligations are, are important. I don't necessarily talk about it in this presentation. There's a small part of the report related to those long-term obligations to be monitoring related to the pension fund, other post-employment liabilities that are just important to keep in mind. And then lastly, the enterprise funds, making sure that the enterprise funds remain stable. So this will be the golf course fund, the pool fund, making sure that they, they remain stable as well and don't incur operating deficits over the years is something for the, for the township to be monitoring. And then lastly, on the last slide, the two thousand and twenty six budget considerations I have, we have included here. So these are important for you to look at when working on the two thousand and twenty six budget. We've talked about all of these throughout this presentation. The stormwater utility fee will have a significant impact on the budget. If there is an increase to real estate tax, to the real estate tax rate, that would have a significant impact. Monitoring personnel expenses and capital expenditures are important on the expense side. Making sure that whatever's being budgeted is in adherence with the fund balance policy following, or creating and following the multi-year capital improvement plan. And then lastly, taking a look at all of the funds that you have and considering if any of these funds can be combined would, would be helpful for the township to reduce the amount of funds and the burden to manage those funds. So looking at those funds, determining what funds could, could be consolidated could then help in the long run with, with the monitoring of all of the funds that you do have. I think that brings us to the end of this handout. Does anyone have any specific questions?
First of all, thank you for that. That was quite the extensive, extensive review. I think we're, we're doing this on purpose, right? We, we want to take a look back at, at our funds and do a deep dive into how things have gone in the past, learn from our past so we, you know, can improve our future kind of thing. And timing couldn't be better, so I, I appreciate the, the deep dive review. I guess initially I will open it up to the board for any comments or, or questions. Happy to let folks start if they have anything. Oh, wow, okay. I, I would just say, you know, things, things that I think a lot of us have been talking about for years, you've, you've also pointed out, so that, that's nice. For example, the, the development of a long-term capital improvement plan. You'll, you'll hear me saying all the time, we need to plan for that. So I, I appreciate that statement there. And then when we, you know, a couple of things that we have been working on are the increase in military cap for second-class townships. Countywide reassessment seems like something we really need to do at some point. Whether the state tells them, tells the counties they have to do it, or, or we somehow initiate that, I don't know. But it hasn't happened since, I think, nineteen seventy-two.
Seventy-two, yeah.
Yeah, so it puts us in a tough spot.
Fifty-three years, sorry.
Yeah, I have not been along that life, alive that long, sorry. And then I think it, you know, things like the stormwater utility fee and some of the other things that we're doing hopefully will be helpful, at least in this, in, in the immediate term, to, to reduce some pressures. But a lot of good information for us to digest and bring into our budget season here. Which as a reminder, we are having budget meetings tomorrow night and Monday night at seven, I believe.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so more to come on our budgets. And then Dave, will this be on our website? Because I know someone's going to ask.
Yeah, we, we're happy, happy to post the information on the website, yes.
With that, I'll, I'll open it up to public comment and questions. And if you have any, please come to the dais, state your name, whether or not you're township resident, and I'll let you ask your questions. I am shocked, I am shocked. Anyone online? And nothing from the board? So with that, I'll say, thank, I know we, for the board, we also have a, a report that sort of supplements this, gets into a deeper dive that we can all digest. Think about when we get into our budget meetings, you know, tomorrow and next week and final budget discussions over the next month or so. We've got a lot to think about, so. Good work and, and thank you for what you've done. I'm sure, Dave, is there any follow-up you need to do or?
Yeah, no, again, happy to place the materials on, on the website. You know, many of these issues are issues that, that are not remarkable in terms of past discussions that have occurred and, and issues that I know that you're aware of. And again, a lot to, a lot to digest. But, yeah, so I'll, I'll leave it at that at this point.
We're, we're going, for anyone watching at home, all, all the suggestions and key takeaways and all that, that's all stuff that we've been talking about all year and stuff that we're going to get into the weeds of as much as we can during this budget season. I know I've said that a few times now, but, for example, and even tonight, we're going to have an, an update on the stormwater utility fee as we get in the nuts and bolts of that. So this is, these, this study is, is leading to real actions that this board is supporting and hopefully leads to positive outcomes for several years to come. All right, well, thank you. And I guess I will move on to item seven, unless you guys have anything else you'd like to add.
No, just want to say, I know it was a lot of information, so just want to again say thank you to the, to the board, to the township manager and staff and everyone for their ongoing engagement and transparency. So we'll be back to talk about some more stuff at future meetings, but we appreciate your attention tonight.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Karen.
With that, I will move on to item number seven.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent to items as listed.
Second.
All right, yeah, first, motion in a second. Any board or, anyone from the public have any comment on that? All right, all the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Harry Dunn, motion carries, five zero. Item number eight is the engineers' report. Eight A, as I just mentioned, will be an update on the stormwater utility fee implementation, I believe.
Yeah, Tyler from, Tyler Herb from HRG is back to provide some additional update and, and respond to some of the, the items that, that were requested by the board at your, at your last meeting.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ryan and Killian is also here with, with HRG that is more involved in some of the budget modeling and financial modeling associated with the, with the rate structure.
Good timing then. Welcome, gentlemen. Take it away.
Your mic's not on, so he doesn't know you need help. He's trying to show his presentation and it's not working.
There we go.
Can you put your mic on? Green button, green mic.
Yeah, you almost have to swallow the thing, otherwise I won't be able to hear you. I get yelled at all the time, so.
All right, well, as Dave said, I, I brought a friend today. Aren't too overwhelmed with all the financial talk because he is going to be talking some financials here. But I will pass it over to Ryan to talk through the, the stormwater utility program budget.
Great. Thank you for having me, everybody. As Tyler alluded to, he is the main man in, in this stormwater implementation. I'm really the numbers guy, the finance guy. High level, we worked with township staff to develop a five-year budget. I'm not going to go line item by line item, but we looked at operating expenses, capital expenses. And then you have debt service associated with capital projects and that large capital project we'll, we'll touch upon as we go down the list. But looking at a five-year basis, we're looking at, on an aggregate level, two point one million dollars in expenses for the stormwater program. For the operating and administrative costs, you're looking at one point seven million dollars in costs. This alludes to salaries and benefits, it alludes to general maintenance and repairs, the audit, billing, et cetera. There's also capital costs that we have in there. This is due to a VAC and a jet truck. And then lastly, we have approximately two hundred thousand on an annual basis that won't start, I believe, until two thousand and twenty-eight. And this is a assumed PRP project that we are looking at to solve the MS four regulatory requirement that the township has. Our assumptions for that is that we have a Penn Vest loan. We suggest Penn Vest loans, we recommend Penn Vest loans just because of the We suggest Penn Vest loans, we recommend Penn Vest loans, just because of the current interest rates that they do offer, and that is approximately $200,000 over that five-year, on an annual basis, beginning in 2028. With a revenue requirement of $2.1 million a year, there's a rate that is involved, and that is where I'm going to hand it off to Tyler, where he looks at different rate structures based on impervious area.
So before we go forward, do you guys have any questions on the budget, what we've developed to this point?
Just the high level, essentially, you've worked with township staff to identify a list of projects
Yep.
that we know of, and maybe a few that we don't know of, just to be conservative, right? And have been able to establish some high-level budget for each project, right? And then, based off of those project budgets, maybe a little, you know, plus or minus, you've established the need and applying the debt service issues and the capital issues.
Correct.
Yeah.
Obviously, we don't know where we'll be in four years from now, what costs will be. We use our best, based on our knowledge, based discussions with township staff of what the expenses are. Obviously, we've assisted with other stormwater utilities, we know what expenses are, that they're ongoing for them as well. And as for the project costs, we, you know, we have engineers who can calculate those respective costs.
Right. And then, with fee, and I'm not going to, with fees, though, when you have fees like this, it's not, they're not static, they can change based on new information, right?
Correct.
So as we go forward each year, we do somewhat of a reevaluation to determine if we need to increase, decrease, stay the same, whatever, right?
Yeah, I mean, again, Ryan and his team, you know, the budget model, and again, you have a more detailed budget that was in your packet or in the, is looking at the potential of establishing a rate and maintaining that rate for a period of time. But to your point, Mr. Chair, I mean, things obviously can change, and there are certain assumptions that are built into the model that may change, again, based on their experience, based on implementation efforts, and how many municipalities in Commonwealth at this point?
There's roughly over 100 that are served.
How many have you been involved with?
Roughly half.
Okay, virtually half of the existing stormwater utilities that exist, they're using all of that collective information to inform the work that they're advising us on.
Yeah, but it's a regularly updated approach.
Correct, yeah, so we recommend, you know, just like any other budget and program, take a look at it on an annual basis, make adjustments as necessary. But as Dave was saying, we are anticipating rates to stay, you know, the same for a five-year period. You know, we could get two years into it and, you know, have a significant shift based on upcoming regulatory requirements that aren't solidified at this point. You know, there's a lot that goes into these things, but, yeah, that's, the goal is to have a flat rate for a five-year period.
Understood. You have a question?
Yeah, and just on a high level, so that people at home, people here can follow along, when you say that you've spoken to staff and you have a shortlist potential of what projects would be next year, could you just, five words or less?
Yeah, the projects that we're anticipating are primarily regulatory in nature, so it would be the PRP projects that have been established in the, this isn't five words or less, I apologize, but that have been established in the PRP plan for DEP.
And for people who don't think academics.
So, yeah, sorry, right.
He was trying to minimize words.
No fair, he cheated.
It's a lot of basin retrofits, stream bank restorations, things of that nature.
So the PRP is Pollution Reduction Plan, and again, that relates to an existing regulatory requirement that the township has based on an approved plan. So those are not hypothetical, some of the assumptions related to project, again, given the extent of their work in this area, they're trying to anticipate what, over that five-year horizon, what the next cycle of requirements, the next permit cycle, what those requirements may look like, based on conversations that are occurring in the Commonwealth.
Thanks, everyone.
Good question, though. Appreciate it.
Okay, so moving forward, you know, we get the question of how do we fund the program? So there's, you know, the somewhat obvious answer of, we could just do a general tax increase, obviously, there's a lot of other factors that play into, you know, if that makes sense or not, but we're going to take this from, you know, a singular review of the stormwater program. So what we found is that the share of the taxable assessed value from the township is roughly 90% single-family residential, and then 10% non-single-family residential. And what I mean by non-single-family residential is strictly anything other than single-family. So we're considering single-family residential properties to be things that, like, not apartments or those types of buildings, you know, a home on a parcel. The non-single families making up commercial properties, et cetera. When we look at the impervious area, you'll see that 71% of the impervious area in the township is single-family residential, 22% is non-single-family residential, and then we added in tax-exempt properties here for 7%. So you'll see that, you know, the tax-assessed value is substantially higher than the impervious area, so therefore, we'd be seeing an increase for residential property owners in funding this program, roughly 27% more if we would fund this through a tax versus a fee. So when we talk about equitability, this is what we're talking about. We're really tying the cost to the program or of the program to the impervious area that is allocating the need for the program. So this is a graph of the impervious area in the township. Those numbers are a little small, I apologize, but we did cap this at 10,000 square feet of impervious for a parcel, just to keep the data meaningful and the graph meaningful here. But you can see, you know, you have that kind of initial bump, and then what we consider to be the significant bump that we want to capture when we're thinking about ERUs and tiers and things of that nature. So I'll point out here that the single-family residential impervious area square foot, on average, is roughly 4,200 square feet. So you can see that, you know, right kind of in the middle of that second bump there is 4,200 square feet, so that's where a lot of your properties are falling. So now we're getting into the rate structures. So the ERU option, again, that's equivalent residential unit, and that is a situation where all single-family properties would pay that same rate. 94% of the properties are classified as single-family residential, it makes up 71% of the total IA, and would be roughly $12.50 per month. Now, all other properties, and this is excluding properties under 300 square feet of impervious area, we're looking at 6% of properties, again, excluding that 3%, 29% total IA, and then they would be billed on a rate of multiples of ERUs. So what we mean by that is, you know, as simply as possible, $12.50 for every 4,200 square feet. Now, we do round that to the nearest tenth for the ERU, so it's not, you know, $1,250 or, you know, $25, there is options in between those. So that's the ERU approach. Any questions on that? Okay.
Just real quick, if someone has a five-acre residential property with, I don't know how many 20,000 square foot homes we have, but something quite large, let's say, versus a third of an acre with a couple thousand square feet, they're paying the same thing per month.
They would be paying.
On this model.
On this model, that is correct, yeah.
So to account for that, we can do a tiered approach, in which case, all properties would fall within a tier range and then pay a rate based on that tier range. So we have a two-tier approach, a three-tier approach, and a four-tier approach for you guys to consider today. Again, that tier zero is just accounting for all of the properties below 300 square feet of impervious area, we are not assessing a fee for those. So in the first option here, the two-tier option, the first tier would be 300 to roughly 4,600 square feet of impervious area, 61% of your properties are going to fall in that tier, it makes up 30% of your impervious area, and your monthly rate would be $7.80. All properties above 4,600 square feet, that makes up 36% of total properties, 70% of the total impervious area, and then they would be billed on a rate per 1,000 square feet of $2.90. So you'll see throughout the different options, the highest tier is always billed on that $2.90 per 1,000 square feet. So the three-tier option, tier one changes from 300 square feet to roughly 3,200 square feet, 35% of your total properties are going to fall in that tier, 12% of your total IA, a rate of $5.25. Tier two would be 3,200 square feet to roughly 6,500 square feet, 49% of your properties are falling in that range, and 41% of your impervious area, and you would have a rate of $13.25. And then, above 6,500 square feet, 13% of your properties, 47% of your total IA, $2.90 per 1,000. And then, the last option here is the four-tier approach, 300 square feet to 2,500 square feet would be 24% of your properties, 6% of your total IA, and it would be roughly $4 a month. 2,500 to 4,600 be 36% of your total properties, 24% of your IA, $10.35 per month. Tier three would be 4,600 to 7,300, 27% of your properties, 28% of your total IA, $16 a month. 73% or, sorry, 7,300 and above is 9% of your properties, 42% of your total IA, and that rate of 290.
Do me a favor, could you kind of give an example of, like, the typical lot and house that would fall under each of those tiers that you're showing?
Yep, so that is the next slide here.
Segways are great, aren't they?
So this is your average single-family residential rate and your comparison. So we have the, on the left-hand side, the billing option, and then we have the percent of total properties, percent of total IA, and then the monthly fee. So with the ERU, your fee would be $12.50 for the average residential property, in theory, all residential properties. Two-tier would be $7.80, three-tier would be $13.25, four-tier would be $10.35.
And what do you consider an average size, like?
Yeah, so the average residential property would be 4,200 square feet, so in these options, I have noted here, so in the two-tier approach, tier one would be capturing that 4,200 square feet, tier two in the three-tier approach, and then tier two in the four-tier approach would be the average single-family.
James, I'm not putting you on the spot, but do you know where you fall in there? If you were to look?
No.
Okay, that's what, I just want people following along at home, just to understand, if they're thinking about their own house, all of a sudden, they're going to start doing math, right? It's like, wait, I have this.
Building footprint, plus driveways, patios, that sort of thing.
Correct, and then, it isn't the livable space of your home, so we have a lot of people get that confused, where, you know, oh, I have so much.
That's how they know.
Because you have multiple stories.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is strictly the footprint of the home.
About half of your gross living area, plus driveways, patios, and that sort of thing.
If you're, yeah, if you have a two-story home, excluding the basement.
Got you.
Go for it.
Along those lines, if I know that I live on a .47-acre lot, and that's 19,689 square feet, as I got from the parcel viewer, right? The question is, what amount of impervious surface do I have, right, for that calculation? I was guessing, and again, without any assessment, the.
Percent-ish?
Hmm?
What's the cap, the 20-percent-ish?
Depends, depends on the district.
Yeah.
Right, so I think I might actually be a little higher, so I was putting myself in at roughly 4,900 square feet of impervious, so under that, I think I'm in favor of three-tier? But the question becomes what that impervious area is, and I don't know what that, what was that tool that I have the password for, but I haven't logged into?
Yeah, so we do have a GIS map.
Near map.
Near map, okay, yeah. Is that stored in there for people? Because it might be helpful just to run mine, if you're curious, to say, okay, because I live on .47 acres, roughly, you know, so that kind of gives you an idea that what I would be paying under different scenarios, you know, the three-tier option is 13.25, right? So that's a win, right? But if it's the four-tier option, and I'd be, let's see, if I'm at 4,900 times, well, I'm at four-tier, I'm at $16 a month?
Correct.
In that one?
Yep, so if you would be at 4,900 square feet, in the four-tier approach, you would be at $16.
Right, in the two-tier approach, right, that 4,900 square feet becomes 4.9 times 2.9, so it's $14.21 in that.
In the three-tier approach, you would be at 13.25.
Right, but in a two-tier approach, everything above 4,600 is.
Okay, yep.
Is now $2.90 per 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, so it would be $2.90 times 4.9.
Yeah, okay. If you just had a rate of 2.9 times per 1,000 square feet, that would be ultimately variable, right, for everybody.
Well, then we've got to see how it falls into the overall.
Yeah, so if you're saying, just do, just do a simple $2.90 for every 1,000.
Yeah.
So the problem with that, you know, is the maintenance of that system. So anytime anybody is building or removing, you would have to be updating the billing data set. You know, similarly, any amount that you have incorrect on the property, based on the impervious area, you know, when you do, when you do a range, it limits the amount of need for appeals. If you're basing all of the parcels as an individual parcel on that $2.90 per 1,000, it becomes potentially very problematic from a managing the program standpoint, and you're increasing costs.
Wouldn't we have to calculate any time anyone built?
You would, you would need to be tracking that and capturing that, but it doesn't necessarily, if you're going with an ERU approach, any building on single families would not affect their rates. If you're doing a tiered approach, any building that doesn't push them above or below the tier would not affect the rate, so you wouldn't have to be making changes to the bill, you would be tracking the impervious area, but it wouldn't necessarily adjust the bill.
Are there any significant, back to one of your previous comments, using, is there any, it doesn't look like there is, but is there any significant cost difference between any of the tier options relative to management of the program?
Yeah, so the more tiers you have, the more opportunity for appeals exists.
Right.
I'm going to take it back to this breakdown here, so one of the things that, you know, we did was, you know, a statistical analysis of where the break should happen. Some of those options, the breaks happen at kind of inopportune locations, that's just how the numbers worked. That doesn't mean that we're stuck with, you know, utilizing those numbers, that's kind of our basis, you know, point to start. But what you want to try and avoid is having a tier break at a peak, so around that 4,500 is a good example. You know, in the two-tier approach, we're breaking at 4,600, so we're slightly above that peak, but that means there's a lot of properties that are on that threshold that could be pushed up or pushed down based on building or, you know, removal, or just having, you know, incorrect impervious area assessments from, you know, parcels not being completely aligned, properties, you know, having a shed from your neighbor on your property, things of that nature. You know, we get rid of that breakpoint in the three-tier option, but, you know, then your kind of average single-family residential property is getting pushed up in the cost compared to the single, or the ERU approach. So, you know, there's pros and cons to all of these, but as far as managing the program goes, there isn't a huge difference from the two-tier to the four-tier, but those are kind of the things that we look at as being potential inputs for additional need. So, any other questions from you guys on the rates at this point?
So of all those, you know, 50-plus townships that you work with, what's the most common approach used?
Yeah, I think, to be honest with you, it's broken pretty evenly between ERU and the tiered approach. I will say, your community is very unique in the amount of parcels that would be considered single-family residential. You are predominantly single-family residential community. Now, there is, you know, a significant, you know, or potential for significant change between parcel to parcel and property to property, and what those look like in the single-family residential or ERU approach, but from a managing the program, that would definitely be the simplest, in my opinion. That's not to say that the other options aren't good options. They can be considered more equitable, but you'll see, in the three-tier approach, the average single-family cost would actually increase compared to an ERU approach.
I kind of like the two-tier in my book, but.
I agree with the two-tier, I think it makes the most sense, it covers more than 60%, and it just makes the average household, you know, a lower cost.
And then, when you're, it's a monthly fee, so it's not a twice-a-year, like we do with. not twice a year, like we do with taxes. So how do, how do you normally implement the fee?
There's no reason why it would have to be a month.
Yeah, we're just giving rates for the month.
Just further, and then you issue the bill at tax time?
Yeah, and I believe, Dave, you're planning on billing on an annual basis, correct?
We're still sort of exploring that at this point, but we have started to have some conversations with, like, the Keystone's of the worlds, the Bercheymers of the worlds, just to, again, once we get to that point, to start having conversations about how we would go about billing. So they can do it, again, you know, on whatever frequency you want. Obviously, if you're billing more frequently, there's costs associated with mailing and postage and the like. So they, you know, indicated, for example, if you wanted to quarterly, they could do an annual, one annual billing with quarterly vouchers, that would be, that would be an option, so.
Do we issue with our tax bills, since we're already paying them, and break it out of that, or is that?
I have to talk to the tax collector about that at this point, and I think we needed to sort of talk through that issue.
I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible.
Sure.
I hate tracking bills myself, but.
I mean, we're invariably going to have separate billing that's required for non-taxable properties anyway, so there is going to be a component part where, if we even decided to go on the tax bill, you're still going to have to, you're still going to have to deal with the non-taxable entities, yep.
Have we come up with a structure for commercial property yet?
It's all, the rate is the rate.
Everything said residential, so the first bit, it said
Yeah, most commercial properties would fall probably on tier two, so again, they would be billed at multiples of the two.
So basically, the average, in tier two, the average homeowner wouldn't be subsidizing commercial properties.
Yeah. And I think one of the questions that John had asked was sort of the, I guess, the relationship between revenue generated and IA, and you did look at that as well. I don't know if you want to say something about that.
Yeah, so with the single-family or ERU approach, the revenue generated by single-family properties is the same percentage of the impervious area as it is the budget generation. So we see, you know, the percent of total IA between these, you know, tier one would be roughly thirty percent of the budget generation versus tier two being seventy percent. So we are consistent with, you know, the single-family approach and the revenue generated based on the impervious area within that grouping.
And for tier-two option, or the two-tier option, you're looking at roughly about a million dollars a year, just on single-family residential?
Um.
Of revenue?
Yeah, give or take.
So about a hundred dollars per household, ten thousand households, about a million? Okay.
I can, I can get you more specific numbers on that.
Close enough for government work.
So obviously, I'm like the least math person up here, so I'm going to try again, because I definitely thought we were not talking about commercial properties. So if you have a house that is forty-six hundred of impervious space, footprint, patio, driveway, you're going to be taxed at the same rate as Sesame Place, which I know is not in a township, I'm just using it as an example.
A large shopping center.
A large shopping center.
Correct.
Same rate.
Correct.
That seems weird to me.
But it's
Same rate, not same bill.
I understand that that's where the math part would come in, but that just, that just seems strange to me, especially, you know, I think the bigger parts of the township are the, quote-unquote, newer parts of the township, which have better, not good, but better stormwater management, and likely, I know we're never going to get to totally fair or totally equitable, but.
It's roughly about thirty percent more, right? So for that same bill, it would be roughly a hundred dollars a year for somebody at tier one, under this example, it would be about a hundred and thirty-three dollars a year for somebody under example number two. Does that sound about right?
That's, that sounds correct. I'm trusting your math, though.
As we say, if you can't do math, go to law school.
Okay, so I think what we were looking for from you guys is a direction in what, you know, rate structure is preferred. I will say, you know, we can adjust the rates and play with the ranges and things if you would like us to, but just, you know, generally, where we are.
Can you bring up the summary one again?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think, my two cents, and I think Supervisor Ross has said the same thing, I lean more towards the two-tier. If we wanted to split it up even more, maybe the four-tier. But I want to, I want to make it as simple as possible while also making it equitable, so I don't want your average homeowner footing the bill for commercial properties and everyone else that are, you know, not only are usually having, obviously have much greater impervious area, but greater, they also have a lot of function, you know, a lot of things going on in that impervious area that lead to pollution control issues. So we have to address, and that's where a lot of our PRP issues come from. So I think, as much as we can, I'd like to make it, take the burden as much as we can off of the residents.
Okay, so we're between the two-tier and the four-tier approach?
I'm just one of five, so.
I'm leaning towards the two-tier, just because sixty-one percent of the properties is only thirty percent of the, yeah, so it's just like, it's just a huge divide for me, so it seems like that makes the most sense. And for sixty-one percent of the population, it's more than twenty percent lower than the next option, so it seems like that's the fairest go for me.
I lean that way, too. If anyone else has any other.
Yeah, I'm coming around on the two-tier, even though I would pay more personally, because I think the simplicity of having a broad range that everybody fits into, like, if somebody puts a shed, you know, that we're not, and nicking people that are, and again, I don't know if I'm forty-nine hundred square feet of IA or not, but I think that's reasonable. And even the difference, if there were the three-tier, I mean, the three-tier, you have a broad group of people who are paying what I would call median, the two-tier, you have a broad people paying a median. When the two-tier, you have a big jump between tiers one and two, that's, you know, I guess I could see, that would probably be simpler, so.
The one thing with the two-tier option that we might want to consider is pushing that threshold for that tier up a little bit. You know, that's another analysis that we can do, that would kind of change the rate for that tier, but you would be able to capture some more properties, get over that impervious area hump. You know, if we would go to maybe five thousand, fifty-five hundred and see what that rate would be, we can, we can do that analysis, if we know we're going with that two-tier approach, and kind of play with that range and see where those numbers lie then.
I'd be arguing against my personal interests, but I wonder if, once you're at sixty percent of the properties, you have a pretty broad base. If you start going to like seventy, seventy-five, then at which point do you say, why not just do a flat one?
Sure.
Right? So I'm, I think I'm there. I'm open to discussion. I do like having the broad range. Most folks are going to be paying, you know, a seven dollar and eighty fee, which is pretty reasonable for that. You know?
Any other board comment?
No.
I'm just not sure if, like, the seventy, like, the poor, the poor person whose house is four thousand, six hundred, if the jump is equitable. And I wonder if we
Well, it's not a huge amount more, because you calculated by two ninety times a thousand, so it, you know, it might be three or four dollars more a month, where a large property that's, you know, huge, that's where it's really going to matter. So somebody that's on the cusp, like maybe John, is unfortunately going to pay maybe three or four dollars more a month, but.
No, I actually pay more. So again, I'm not sure if forty-nine hundred is my IA, and I went in a near map, and I was trying to do the polygon for my driveway.
Yeah. It's hard to do on your phone.
Yeah, well, I have the tablet, but that becomes fourteen, so that's double. So once you hit forty, like, if you hit forty-six hundred, right, so that's four-point-six times.
Thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents per month.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. So it almost doubles once you hit forty-six hundred, right? Which, that gets into the point of which, to give people less of a jump, right, you're going to increase everyone else's rate. So that's the trade-off.
Correct.
Right? And so, and I don't know at what level of IA or impervious surf, surface area is the point at which is, you know, where it should be penalized, or it should be more, or what have you, I, you know.
Can we see, when, now that we've given you direction, can we see the two-tiered with some flex in the size and the monthly fee? Like, if you put the monthly fee up to eighty, eight dollars, could you bring it down to two-seventy? I know you can't, and even I know that math doesn't work, but something like that that might help with the jump.
So the rate per thousand won't change, but we can adjust the range
The range, yeah.
And pull some more properties into it, and, you know, the monthly fee per property will increase, but you might be able to capture some additional properties there.
And how do homeowners who are hearing this and thinking, what will I be paying? Like, is there some way they can either call and we'll tell them, hey, we think you fall here, or is there any way we can give them a ballpark?
I mean, we can, we can provide you, you know, a spreadsheet with that data. I believe you have all that on a GIS viewer, but we can talk about opportunities to, you know, share that with the public.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, at that point, it probably makes sense to have sort of the individual, have the spreadsheet, because again, going in and sort of manipulating the near map, that can be, that can be challenging, right? So depending on how people are accessing it, so to the extent that you can provide that parcel-by-parcel information at that point, then we could say, okay, well, such-and-such parcel number is.
What I think might be helpful, when you do that, if you can come in and maybe staff can help you
I think so.
Identify a couple neighborhoods, big neighborhoods that are clear examples of each of these tiers. You say, okay, if you live in Yardley-Hunt, for example, that's a big neighborhood, you might be doing this. If you live in this part of town, it might, it might be more similar to this.
Yes.
It gives some
So if it would be helpful, we could produce a map just showing, you know, where, like, if you're tier one or tier two, and highlight each parcel a different color, you know, based on tier one or tier two.
I mean, that
Yeah, I mean, that would
Sounds helpful.
That would be helpful.
We don't want a crazy map, every little house is labeled tier one, tier two.
No, yeah.
Whole neighborhoods or zones.
Or even like a sample thing, like, if your house's footprint is two thousand square feet, and you live on a lot of X, they could then start doing the math themselves.
For me, I don't, I get what you're saying, I don't know that everyone has that vision, you can picture that in their head. That's why if you get a map, you can say, okay, I live here, it looks like this whole section here is
You're green, and green equates to X.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm blue, blue equates to, yeah.
Yeah, and there will be exceptions, if you have a pool or something like that, but that would be, I think that would be helpful to people to picture that.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, we can, we can get that created pretty quickly. Just for my clarification, do we want to base that on these numbers here, or do we want to play with that range anymore?
Ken, personally, and I think I heard this from the board, somebody tell me, I didn't, I think we're leaning more towards tier two, but we're open to moving, moving the needle on the range to see what the options may be.
So, yeah, we can, we can do some assessment on if we would, you know, change, change that upper limit, what that would do to the rate, how many properties would be captured, and then once we have that clarified, we can create that map for you.
Okay. I, just going back and forth, one of the things that might be helpful for people to have a good illustration of this is if you picked, like, ten sample properties, right, and show, okay, here's the property, because I'm messing with my own property for, and he and I were calculating here, if I have a wooden deck, right, that shows up as impervious, right?
Correct.
Is that going to be impervious in the calculation?
It would be. Now, typically, with decks, if you can submit photos and prove that the area underneath it is not impervious, that that area can be removed.
Yeah, so if it's dirt versus gravel, you're good.
No, I'm not cement, so I'm legit.
Cement would be impervious.
Yeah.
Gravel or dirt? I'm dirt, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people are dirt, yeah.
Now, I will say that we try and stay consistent with how impervious area is defined in your ordinance, so if your ordinance does differ from that, you know, we wouldn't recommend making those adjustments.
Yeah. But even with that, depending on how this all, I might fit into that, and I, I think point-four-seven acres is not, the average is higher, right, for LMT?
Smaller, smaller.
Smaller? Oh. Oh, really? Okay. So, sorry.
You're fancier than you think.
Okay, I didn't know.
You're saying in terms of lot size?
Yeah, lot size. Point-four-seven?
Half acres.
Point-four-seven.
Point-four-seven?
Yeah.
Jimmy, you have a sense on that, of the average residential property in terms of acreage?
I would say point-three-five.
Yeah, about a third.
It's probably a quarter.
Okay.
I thought you said point-seven.
Yeah. Okay.
Jimmy just said you're slightly above average, is what went
Slightly above average? Jimmy, you're teeing up so many great follow-up jokes, but my understanding is you have a bigger lot than I do, so.
So, do you have what you need from us?
Yeah, so for the next meeting, we can, you know, have some more examples for the tier ranges, and based on that, we'll get a map created for how properties are falling.
All right, so looking forward, because you saw the presentation we had a little while ago, you know, we have our budget meetings coming up, this will play into that. So, next question is, when can you have it to us, and when do we need to give you a decision so that we can get it into our 2026 budget?
Yeah, so what I, what I would say is, if we can have a decision at the next board meeting, that would be optimal.
And you're ready for the next, you'll be ready for the next board meeting?
I'm always ready.
There you go. I like it, I like it.
Okay.
All right, awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you, have a good night. Good. And so item eight B is, I could probably give this one, project update on the Highland Drive drainage improvement project. I don't know who's, is, Derek, is that you doing this one?
I think you're giving it, Dan. And Dan, that's a podium. That's a podium. It's a podium.
Good evening, yes. So, Highland Drive, everything is actually moving along quite well. Utility providers, American Water has done their work, their tie-in work has been completed. Pico Gas has gotten a relocation underneath the culvert, so that doesn't hold up the culvert work anymore, and our contractor is moving along with storm pipe and storm inlet installations. Looking forward, they're actually a little ahead schedule, our contractor, they're looking to start pouring the footers for the new culvert next week, and then hopefully with the following week, right around Thanksgiving-ish, expecting delivery of the new culvert section. So we're looking good. Pico Gas has some additional work to do at Highland and Upton, but they're, you know, everyone's working on top of each other, such a small space, so we've got to get some storm work done, and then they're going to come back and do that gas work for us. So like I said, I would say, schedule is where it should be, if not a hair early, we'll be, we'll be known more in the next two weeks if we're looking a little early on the schedule, so it's going good. Be happy to answer any questions.
Derek, I live in this neighborhood, and I can see the work from my office, my home office window, so I know, and I get phone calls from everyone in the neighborhood when something goes wrong, or if they get questions, so I'm intimately aware of all this stuff. And whenever we can't get in and out of our driveways, I get phone calls or knocks on the door. That being said, our contractor has been very good.
Yep.
Very good. I think the main concern has been the other contractors showing up when they're supposed to, so like Pico or American Water. I think they don't always stick to the schedule that they've told, and they may show up a day later, a day early, without telling our contractor, so.
That is, that is correct. We try to, yeah, our general contractor's been great, HRG's inspectors have been great dealing with them and organizing, coordinating. We are unfortunately at the mercy of the utility providers to get their work done. We are unfortunately at the mercy of the utility providers to get their work done. We try to coordinate as best as possible. The contractors doing the work for those, you know, utilities, they try to be as polite as possible, because they're our neighbors, they work here all the time, but again, they're at the mercy of Pico and American Water directing their work, so.
Yeah, private utilities are tough to deal with sometimes.
Yes, the contractors are, they, they try to have direct communication as much as they know that they can tell us, so.
Yeah. One observation today, I think they had, they were there much later than usual, it looks like they had some, they may have had some issues with the fire hydrant area, where there, there was a connection there. And I know they were hurrying, trying to hurry to get out by, you know, before everyone got home from work and all that stuff, but they were, they were there much later. Nothing negative happened, but I just want to make sure that everything is okay. Otherwise, the, the other major concern that people have is that Upton and Highland is a bus stop four times a day, five times a day, whatever it is. There's a dump truck that loves to get there at the exact same time as the bus.
Right at the same time, no.
Before seven o'clock, every, every day.
Yeah, no.
You did it again this morning.
HRG's field staff has been great, they're, they're aware of that situation, they're trying to, their inspector actually gets there as early as possible to make sure he's coordinating and making sure that that stuff is as, as maintained as possible, you know.
That's where we actually sent a different, a smaller bus today to make sure they could fit her, I noticed. But other, and then in the afternoons, mornings are actually easier to pick up kids, usually because they haven't started the work yet. For the middle school, that's the one good thing about middle schoolers starting so much earlier this year, is that they can almost beat that dump truck.
Beat it in, yep, correct.
Everyone else, not so much. And then the afternoon, they're still working.
They're still there.
So, we just got to continue to be careful about that. But so far, I think I've gotten positive feedback from everyone around.
Good to hear. Great.
So.
Any other questions?
Awesome.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. Item nine, Mr. Cracher, I believe this is you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is consider authorizing the PADP 904 Recycling Grant Service Agreement for grant years twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven for Huff Associates. Again, this is a multi-year contract renewal in the amount of $12,000 annually. This is an existing contract, an existing relationship that the township has had for a number of years in which Huff Associates is collecting and submitting recycling performance grant information on the behalf of a multi-municipal group consisting of six municipalities here in Bucks County. We would recommend your consideration to authorize execution of the agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the Pennsylvania DEP 904 Recycling Grant Services Agreement for grant years 2025, 2026, 27 from Huff Associates in the amount of $12,000 annually.
Second.
Any port comment or questions? Any public comment or question? Anyone on the line? All right, that'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. The next item relates to a topic of conversation that occurred at your meeting on September the third, relates to engaging a consultant to develop a land use and economic development strategy for the SR 332 Stony Hill Road and Township Line in Edgewood Village areas of the township, as was previously communicated at that, that meeting on the third of September. This is directly coming out of the, the recommendation for this is coming directly out of the township's comprehensive master plan update that was adopted by the, the Board of Supervisors in August of 2019. This specific scope, there were fifty-nine specific recommendations contained in that, in that comprehensive plan update. This actually advances seven out of the fifty-nine specific recommendations, addressing specific recommendations in the categories of housing, land use, and transportation, and traffic circulation. Based on that conversation that occurred on the third of September, township staff did solicit proposals from a number of firms that have related experience in this area. We received three responses. The exercise of, of sort of requesting responses was a little bit of a, a test in and of itself in the sense that we simply outlined some of the general challenges and opportunities that exist within that area of the township, and asked the consultants to essentially propose a potential approach, including specific deliverables, to address some of the needs that we were expressing to them. Again, based on the responses received, as the agenda notes, township staff is recommending the engagement of Michael Baker International at a total cost of $85,724 for the performance of the work. Again, just in terms of differentiating this proposal from, from the others, when you look through the response, the approach, the extent of the deliverables that, that, that we will receive, the utility of those respective delivery, deliverables, again, our, our general feeling is that the Michael Baker scope is, is the most comprehensive and holistic of the, of the three responses that we received. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that members of the board may have.
Would anyone like to make a motion and get the conversation started?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal in the amount of $85,724 from Michael Baker International for land use economic development strategy planning for the SR 332 Stony Hill Road Township Line Road, Edgewood Village area.
Would anyone like to second that? All right, I will second it. All right, any board comment or questions?
The funding for that $85,000, is that going to come out of this year's budget or next year's budget? It's likely that it would be part of the 26 budget, just in terms of invoicing, yeah.
Got you, thank you. Okay. And any other board comment or questions?
Yeah, I was going to say, I wrote through the proposals, and I hadn't known Michael Baker from, as a planning firm. We did have a good experience with them and a couple other projects in the past, so I was surprised, I thought theirs was pretty comprehensive, so tend to agree with the recommendation. I would say concerns about cost on this particular one would be offset by fees, by any potential future development in that area that would allow us to recapture the costs associated with that. And more importantly is, it is a chance for the community to provide input and help in strategic planning in this area, and we'd rather be ahead of the curve than responding. Sometimes with land development, we're often in a spot where we have developers come to us, and we don't necessarily have the tools to position solutions that work best for the whole community. This will allow us to outline a set of a vision, if you will, for that area, and the kinds of things that we'll accept in terms of development. It has also the potential to reduce potential litigation in the future, as well as better serve the community, so that's why I'm in favor of it.
Anyone else on the board?
I'm not super for this, I'm not really up for, in my mind, it's spending $85,000 of taxpayer money to create a roadmap for developers in the future, so I kind of feel like if, if a property gets bought and needs to be developed, that it should be on the developer to, to create a plan to give to the township, and not the township to create it.
So, one of the primary roles of, of municipal elected officials is to develop a comprehensive master plan that specifically is to create a vision for development in the township for ten years at a time. That way, we can be forward-thinking and planning ahead such that the vision matches what the community wants. It's not what a developer wants at any certain time, where they come and we do one-offs, it's so that we can create a strategic plan and address these issues proactively, and such that we don't get stuck in poor developments, poor projects, litigation if we disagree, because they, maybe they can do something from an outdated zoning plan, which we have lots of outdated zoning in this town, as we've heard over the years, but we have no recourse for preventing them from developing something that we don't want, right? They take us to court and we lose. So, it, doing this is fulfilling, you know, and I was chair in 2019 when we finally got that, that comprehensive master plan approved, because it lacked for years, because prior boards, not, not ours, but prior boards just never passed the comprehensive master plan, they just kicked it down the road. This is implementing that plan, it's creating a very distinct vision for a corridor that is incredibly important to the township. It's inclusive of the historic Edgewood Village, which we've seen up and down in terms of development pressure, some of it good, some of it terrible, but trying to follow existing zoning. We have potential redevelopment of the area around, I'll call out a couple stores, because everyone knows Giant McCaffrey, McCaffrey's, we've heard that, that, that will happen someday. And then the whole area around the, the other corridor there that, I guess around Flower Fields and all that stuff, is, is included in there on up to the OR District, which we all know is incredibly outdated, and we've said that for years, and the comprehensive master plan has said that, which leads us into those office parks and the Shady Brook area where we know there's future development pressure there, and the area around Prickett. It would have been nice at some point to include that entire, the way most planners do it, most towns do it, but we just never got there, I guess, to be able to include the entire interchange at 295 as part of a transit-oriented development approach, but we, the township kind of went, got there in a backwards, backwards phase, unfortunately. So now, we're, we are dealing with the last major corridor in the township that we have the opportunity to protect from bad development and, and implement our vision for it. So I think it's a, I think it's a no-brainer to do this, and I think $85,000 relative to other things we spent a lot more money on is not very much. I think the, the investment that we get, the investment return we get on this will be orders of magnitude greater than that once, when things are implemented. And it allows us to tell developers, no, you're going to do this versus that, and you're not going to push us around. So that, that's why I'm very much in favor of this. Any other board comment or question?
Yeah, you know, I'm compelled by what you just said. I'd also say ten years is four years away for the new master plan, so this might line up nicely. That all being said, I'm not sure, Dave, if you can give like some high levels, why staff thought that proposal was the best, because
Sure.
me with my great math mind would not have picked that one.
Sure, sure. So there's, I mean, again, I'll just sort of point out some of the, some of what, what we view as sort of differentiating aspects of, of the proposal. So, so there's a series of tasks that are outlined, seven tasks in, in total that are, that are outlined in, in the Michael Baker proposal. Task two has to do with a community-oriented, you know, visioning and design workshops, so again, as some of the comments that some of the board members have made, that's intended to be an opportunity for the community to engage in this process, not necessarily, again, respond to an applicant's wishes, but, but more to define what sort of the strategy and vision is for, for the overall area. So, you know, there's elements of that in some of the other proposals, but again, I've had an opportunity to, in the past, work with the Michael Baker folks to, and, and really here, they'll, they'll bring sort of, sort of a, a multi-disciplinary sort of focus, so you'll have, I would say, not to critique the other proposals, but the other firms are, are generally sort of design-focused solely, whereas the Michael Baker proposal is combining multiple disciplines into, into the project team. The supporting infrastructure plan, I think that, that is a, an important element and sort of deliverable that Michael Baker has recognized, that in order to support land use within the area, it's important that the overall infrastructure supports that. And so, as noted in task four of their report, they're dealing with a host of, of sort of infrastructure components, from roadways to pedestrian and bicycle networks, to potential public spaces in the form of parks and recreational amenities, public utilities, stormwater infrastructure, signage, you know, parking facilities, street lighting, and we're going to have sort of planning-level cost estimates that are going to be developed as part of that supporting infrastructure plan, that will ultimately enable us to, to go after any external funding that we would seek for purposes of implementing sort of the public components of, of the strategy, not what's happening on individual property, but some of the things that we as a public entity would, would likely be involved in, or even conversely, if we're negotiating with someone that is engaging in land development activity, that infrastructure plan would provide us with a firm basis to be able to say, here's what, here's what's necessary to support the, the extent or the degree or nature of the development that's occurring on the, on the parcel. They also look at sort of codifying all of those improvements beyond sort of a planning document, but they speak specifically to another planning tool that the township has, which is our official map, looking at potential amendments, again, to codify those requirements beyond just simply, simply a planning document. You know, finally, again, they, they outline, you know, a very clear deliverable in terms of the land use regulations to enable the vision, right? So, many of the other proposals talked about establishing a vision, but, but then again, from an implementation perspective, the Baker proposal says, okay, the visioning is great, but you ultimately need tools in order to realize the vision. And that was really the distinguishing factor from our perspective as we were, as we were reviewing it, that, that sort of combination of design, visioning with tangible work products that, that ultimately would position us to adopt tools to require the realization of that vision as opposed to just simply drawings.
Any other board comment or questions? Any public comment or question?
Hi, I'm Lori Gray, I am a Lower Meekville Township resident, and I do appreciate and recognize the vision, right, and having to have a plan and a vision and where we want the township to go, but I just sat through a presentation about where we are financially, right, and that we have to be very, very careful about where we spend our money. I, I think I heard Supervisor Lewis maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but say, but said, we're going to, we'll get this money, there's an opportunity to get this money back that we spend. When? Who manages that? Who's going to see that? I then sat through a presentation where the outcome of that is going to be residents are paying more money out of their pocket for stormwater management fee. So, I really, I, I just, I just ask you all to just, we only have you five to manage our money, okay? And whether it's three percent inflation or four percent on this or two percent on that, our income doesn't go up, ten, twelve, fourteen percent, right? So, we really depend on you to do, you have to have the whole vision, I get it, but I'm just asking you to really look at where we are spending our money this year, and please don't come back next year or at budget time and say, now we've just got to add on another fee or another cost, because we, we, we have to move forward. So I just, I just wanted to give my two cents, and I appreciate Supervisor Ross in saying.
Good. Yeah, well, you also heard that we hadn't raised taxes to account for inflation, so we have not raised taxes, and real estate taxes are a fixed amount.
I understand that.
So, we haven't raised taxes to cover inflation, which is part of the challenge, why we don't have enough money in the general fund long run. There are a lot of solutions that were in there that were solvable. As it relates specifically to the funding of this, we have received offers from developers to pay for it, we've also received the potential for state funding for it as well. We wouldn't have advanced it, or at least I don't think those who advocate in favor of it would advance it if they didn't think it would add enough value for you. What I would say to you is, you can check us on our work, when development comes as a result of this, that this amount is paid back. You'll see it in development agreements, you'll see it in that process, so you can definitely check us on it. But what you may not see is a circumstance where when a developer comes in, they present one thing, and we get something, and the finest, finished-built product isn't quite exactly the vision we thought it was, or needs corrections and stuff like that, there's costs associated with that. If you look at, just for example, the Prickett Preserve example, that process If you look at, just for example, the Prickett Preserve example, that process didn't meet everyone's needs. Now, the outcome of that is probably fixable, right? But I think even proponents of that have concerns with certain elements of how that process worked out and how the township got proper value for that experience. So my suggestion on this is, if two years from now, Lori, when you come back and you say, they're planning to build a data center where Shady Brook is, how can you stop it? And the law says, well, we can't, right? And I'll say, hey, if we had this comprehensive plan, you wouldn't be worrying about a data center, right? That's what I would say to you. And you're asking the five of us to think like that, to plan ahead so that
Understood, yes.
And that's the trade-off. And, and I'm comfortable with the risk here that, you know, you might say that this isn't the best investment now. I'm comfortable that it is. And you can hold me accountable, you know where I'm at, you call me, you got my email, I'm, I'm around. I'll bet it, it's a good choice. And you can come back six months, a year from now and see
I know, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But will, will we remember? And, and I'm not saying you or me or, I'm just saying, it's so far down the future. I mean, look at the, look at that bike path, for example, that I still don't even know what the status of that is because it does, it's not included in the engineer's report anymore, but how much money did the township spend on that? Bike path to nowhere, right?
Which, which
The one that, the walking or bike path or whatever it is off of Taylorsville there by the, the one that we've had the issues with.
Yeah, yeah.
We had to turn it and move it and change it.
So Lori, you know that that was paid for by both state grants and a funding from the Delaware joint toll bridge commission.
I'm just using that as an example.
Right.
Down the road, you forget that these things happen or where they're from.
You're giving exactly the right case here, Lori.
Well, then, there you go.
Let me tell you, let me give you that
I was able to do that for you.
But here's why
I'm just worried, right now, I'm worried about today and I'm worried about when we get into the budget. And I just sat through a presentation that we have to be careful. So I appreciate that, I appreciate your comments, I do.
No, no, this is great, Lori. No, no, I know the three minutes. But what's important though, Lori, is we don't get a lot of good public comment, right? I appreciate you coming up and, and challenging us, that's good, that's, that's part of citizenship and that's wonderful. The problem is, we don't, there's no, I don't see any media out here covering us. Did you see any newspaper reporters? No TV cameras, right? No one's watching what we're doing, except you thankfully and who's ever watching online. We need to get you guys, citizens, engaged in the planning process so that you're going to be happy with the outcome. This is part of doing that. And so I can appreciate your concern about cost, but I also appreciate that if two years from now, a developer wants to do something and everybody, and this room is filled and everybody's angry, and they're going to say, well, why didn't you think about this or why didn't you come back? Am I going to say, well, Lori said, we're, you know what I'm saying?
I would certainly hope you would not say that.
I would not do that.
I would certainly, I would not expect you to say that.
Right, but
No, but thank you. I just, I just wanted my, I just wanted my comment and I appreciate that, that you welcome it and that you listen to it, so thank you very much.
I would say in a, in a parallel path, you know, we heard that most of the township is residential tonight, right? We've heard that a couple times. In the last few years, because our township zoning across the board has been so, so outdated and so bad and we get a pile of smelly stuff when we get a lot of development proposals, right? We went forward and, and changed zoning such that we have open space requirements now. That is a, that took a lot, that took a lot of money for attorneys and planners and others. It wasn't a strict proposal from one group, but it took a lot of resources to do that, probably more money than, than we're paying here, given the amount of time it took, right? So our previous solicitor took forever to get us that information, right? And they weren't cheap. So, and, you know, we put some work into that, it, hopefully a positive benefit. We're getting, not only are, did we do the rezoning to try and update those things, right? But now we're going to get more open space out of it, we're going to get more other benefits out of it, increased property values generally across the township, which is increased revenue, hopefully. So everyone benefits on a relatively small investment. In this case, spending eighty-five thousand, we could, we could go to a developer and say, hey, could you, you want to pay for this for us? And they do it in a heartbeat, right? And, but then we'd have people saying, well, you just, you're kowtowing to developers now. And you're like, no, we, we wouldn't let them have any say in it if we didn't want to, but it would, it would fund it so that people who are fiscally conservative and are worried about every penny but having a hard time seeing the forest through the trees would, would be okay with, you know, wouldn't say, hey, you're, you're paying a couple bucks to do a study. So that's what we, we struggle with. If we do this and we get to dictate future land uses that are the highest and best use for this township and create the best quality of life for this township and create the, the most, the greatest likely real estate value for all of our residents in this township, I think everyone, nobody would notice, would, would say a peep about spending eighty-five thousand dollars to do that because we would all benefit much greater than that. And that's what we're trying to do. That's why we have a comprehensive plan, that's why we're trying to do this study, that's why personally I think if, if this doesn't happen, we're putting the township in a much worse spot for years to come. And it'll be on this board for not doing it. And that's why, and that's why we have to do comprehensive plans because that's, that's our duty. It's not just approving consent agendas all the time. It's not just doing simple stuff like that. We have, this is the vision statement for the township and we have to do something to implement that.
Okay, great, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Any other comment? Okay. Good?
Yeah.
All right, I will call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10 is Public Works. I'm curious, are, we didn't do any of these on consent agenda, I'm wondering.
We should have.
Well, is
You guys can tie everything
I, I know, well, before I do that, because I'm trying to make
Sure, no, absolutely.
Are there any here that you have, you, you're concerned with?
No, no.
That you want to talk about or
No, we, any questions, I'd be glad to answer, any questions with all the individual items? But no, they're pretty much straightforward.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Public Works Agenda item A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I'll second. All right. I have a question on 10A, is that, is that the work in front of the school?
That is correct. So that, that is to install the
You don't have his history.
Pre-existing traffic calming rumble strips and associated gore markings in the shoulder between Homestead and Colonial Ridge in front of McPhitlamentary, that is correct.
You and I talked about, yeah, not the board, yes, sorry. Sorry.
And that is funded through the, the road improvement
No, I understand.
Yep.
I was trying to translate in my head what we were talking about. Yeah, 10, 10A is an issue that I personally would like to talk about.
Okay, I'd like to
All the others, I think
I'll amend my motion to remove A.
So 10B through A.
We could ask questions about that before we vote on all of it, so you could just leave the motions.
Okay, then leave it, leave it.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, leave it.
All right.
All right. So we got a motion, do we get, we got a second?
Correct.
Thought so? All right, so I have a question on 10A.
Sure.
And I know we're just, we're paying these folks. This, for those watching at home and for this board, this is, this area is of concern to a lot of folks.
Mm-hmm.
There's, and I know we've talked about the history of it a bit, but this is across from the elementary school.
Correct.
It's where the crosswalk is. We've had some tragic, at least one, if not two tragic accidents there. So a few years back, this, we've looked at multiple options. Ultimately, there was a crosswalk with rumble strips and striping and lots of other traffic calming measures, hopefully, that were implemented just in the last, what, five, six years-ish?
Yeah.
And those were all removed as part, as part of the repaving, partially because the rumble strips, I think, were tearing apart a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yep.
So now, they've gone back and repaved, but haven't done, and I think they put in the reflector, I'll call them the blundy reflectors, I'll never forget, forget you for those, but they haven't gone back and done any of the other stuff that we had done there. So we're paying for that with this 10A, but we probably need to give you some direction, which may be a separate conversation on how to proceed with any reinstallation or newer, better traffic calming measures based on the experience. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yeah. 10A would put back exactly the pre-existing conditions, correct. In the road program scope, I guess I inadvertently did not include the rumble strips and the, the gore markings. So this would put them, we would go right back to pre-existing conditions once the road has already been paved, that, that is correct.
And we'd have to ask for a scope to reinstall, to, to do anything in addition to normal pavement, we would have to ask for a scope of work to do that because that wasn't in their base budget?
Correct, yeah, that, correct. The, the only thing that we had back, which is traditional of us, is to put back a crosswalk which was there, the reflective strips that everyone loves, yes, they were going back as, as, as part of the original scope of the road program, that's correct.
So maybe, I don't know if this is something we, we could discuss separate from this tonight, approve these payments, but I think we need some, we need to give Public Works some direction relative to this crossing and this stretch of road because not all of the features that were installed a few years back, safety features that we installed a few years back were, were put back as part of this repavement project.
Everything that was there prior to us milling out the road with this eleven thousand dollars puts everything back.
Inclusive of the rumble strips and all that?
Yes, that's what this
Oh, oh, I thought
Yeah, that's, that's what this is. This puts back all safety features that were installed, that is correct.
So, okay, then let me switch.
You're good, no, so just say yes and we'll do everything that was there.
So, you like the rumble strips, how about that?
So, yeah, I, I did, I did meet with the, I, I think we're safe to put all the rumble strips back. The way the road was paved, I think in the past, I think the rumble strips were not installed properly, but I'm very comfortable that will be okay this time. They won't be detrimental to the asphalt, that is correct. If you, if you gore them out improperly, you can create voids and puddling and it does, it does, that road did not last that long, that stretch of road. It was, so, we're, we're in good shape.
Quick history, I think it's, it's like over eight years when those were installed. Was that
It was twenty eighteen, I believe, twenty eighteen.
Yeah, the high water table conversation.
Yeah.
So it's
The one thing, and I know those who like to know, learning about projects to make sure that we don't repeat prior errors, in that project, the challenge we had, this predates you, Derek, so you're
No, yeah, I read a lot about it.
Yeah, we had an issue with the stamping and the curing of that raised roadway. So there are a couple elements, safety-wise, that we had, there's like a traffic diaphragm, the way the lines are painted to slow people down. I know people like signage, rumble strips and stuff. This was a more efficient way of doing that and we're going to restore that, so for those.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we tried to piece together some of the history reviewing
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, yeah.
Buy us a drink, John and Ken.
It was, it was very, very much, very much an interesting conversation that went on for a extended period of time.
And, and just for background, I remember, because it was milled and left unpaved for a little longer than I think probably expected, and I know a few of us drove past and were like, what did they, what happened? Why is it already being repaved and are we getting back X, Y, Z?
Sure.
And then we went through the history of it, of
Yes.
Speed hump or no speed hump?
This will put back everything that was there a month ago.
Okay.
It looked like, just, just the way it was.
Cool.
Okay.
One more question, I
Go for it, yeah.
Because, as asked previously, what's the status of the Woodside Bike Path in terms of the projects? Here we have a negative change order.
Right, so, and, yeah, so item B and C is closing out the official Woodside Road Bike Path project. So item B is a net deduct change order, which they're a unit price contract, so when RV finally totals up of actual install amounts versus what was in the bid document, that's a net credit from the overall original contract value. Item C is to close out of the final payment to the contractor of twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty.
But has the, have the repairs been inspected?
All of the contracted work as per design has been completed, yes.
So, can I ask you a very specific one?
Can I ask, very specific?
And, and my esteemed
Yep.
neighbor to my
Absolutely.
to over to the left here can correct me. Specifically, when I think of some of the screw-ups that were, were done there, there's the one area that is adjacent to the basin, the rather large basin that had caved in. There were other areas where there were holes here and there and failing, failing pavement, failing sidewalk. Have all those items, have those items been corrected?
All contract work as designed by the engineer at the time has been successfully completed by the contractor. So I am comfortable that the contractor performed their scope of work to the plans and specs that they bid.
I, I get that, I get that. That being said
To your second part of your question
Go for it.
The, the issues of potential design flaws have not been corrected, they are not the contractor's responsibility. They built to the plans and specs provided. So if there's additional work that has to take place, whether it's fixing the sloughed asphalt because the path was installed, designed and installed too close to the slope, we need to remediate that through another, whether it's a contract, in-house or something else. That, that work needs to be remediated, that is correct.
So
There was, there was, on that specific issue, there was a temporary fix.
Yes, Public Works, we did
But it is not
It's not the, we just wanted to stop it from sloughing off. We, we did asphalt in certain areas that, again, was beyond the contractor's scope, we just wanted to stop the degradation of the pathway.
Understood. So in order to get, make the township whole eventually, because those things need to be fixed, have, have we, have there been any conclusions made relative to whether it was designed inappropriately or installed inappropriately?
Officially, officially, no, but yes, there, we have had conversations with
We have our solicitor here who can tell you
Yes, we, we've had conversations with our, our, our traffic engineer, Safe at the Time. There are issues, again, with, with a section of pathway that is from Clearview, what's the last one?
Clearview.
Clearview, Clearview to Taylorsville that requires remediation work due to closeness of the path to the drive, the Woodside Road.
That's in the other direction.
Five feet thing.
Correct.
What's that?
He's going
I'm going down the hill.
He's going down, yeah.
I still have to deal with going up where despite, you know, all the jokes about my ability to measure
Every, that, that entire stretch, so he, he commented on the section that's, that's, is that
Down the hill.
Down the hill from Clearview.
Yes.
However, the separation distance issue was
The Clearview is, it's, that's a U, so, you know
Yeah, I get confused over there.
Which part you mean?
But to your point, there are, there are existing conditions that are proper, were most likely improperly designed that needs remediation work. It was not due to the contractor's fault, they followed plans and specs.
Okay. So we got to come up with the, an approach to that. So is the, is it open officially?
I, I would say everything north of the hill is open. West, west of the hill is open. And the way, the reason I say we have the barriers going downhill, because there is no safe passage across Taylorsville Road, right? So the last thing you want to do is send a pedestrian down Taylorsville Road to an intersection that does not have pedestrian accommodations.
Give me a runner.
Or run, yeah.
It's a steep downhill, you can get a low speed. Okay, so we, so this covers paying that?
This, the contractor did all, all, all the work that they were contracted to do.
Correct.
And that, that covers that area, yes.
Yes, so to
We ain't done yet.
We're not, you know, we have, we do have the crossing that's in, in the works
The crossing is under design.
From a permitting perspective and, and design perspective. And then to the extent that there's additional work that needs to be done, that would form the basis of any potential claim against the design engineer, that, that we would have to go through that process, so.
All right, so we need to get
So the next step would be to onboard an engineer to review that section that's still closed, come up with a solution, price that solution, and to Dave's point, that would be your basis of
Potential claim.
Damages.
Okay. Okay. Is that something we need to put on the agenda ASAP?
You always have to be concerned with any kind of statute of limitations of when, but right now, I don't even think the, the problem's been identified in a global perspective, but not in a detailed perspective. So I think we have to, as stated, we have to determine what the problem is and how to rectify it to establish damages. We have time. It doesn't have to happen in the next week or the next month, but it should happen sooner than later.
If we put it on an agenda that's coming up, we can just say, yeah, we're going to start.
Give us the authority to continue the, the process.
Yeah, and I can say that Lower Makefield has a history of previously working with your firm in dealing with issues involving engineering companies in past experiences. You have a gentleman, Craig Turret, who was awesome, love him, in dealing with another engineering company that we had an issue with and resolved that after some time. So for those who have concerns, when issues or projects don't work as, as intended, we do follow up, and, and we've got Craig, he's still around, right?
And Craig is still around, will be more than happy to assist.
Yeah, very nice guy, but brutal.
Brings the hammer.
Brings the hammer. Unassuming, but brutal. Don't mess with him.
So I'm just going to challenge that the rest of the bike path is fit and safe to be opened because the non-barrier, however you want to think about it, I think, is problematic. We were told that it was five feet from the roadway, I believe it is not, and that's what makes me concerned that we don't have an appropriate buffer. I am not an engineer, so I could be wrong, but I think we need to temper by saying, you know, it's good before then because I'm not sure that that is true.
That's fair. I would say probably the next step, if the board so wishes, we, we could have HRG look at it and start developing a solution to the, to the pathway. I mean, if so choose.
Yeah, and we have, do we get some, was it Safe that developed some?
Safe looked, Safe did like a cursory review, yeah, just like a safety walk of the path. Yep, they did.
Okay. Yeah, we need to get that, get that thing squared away. It's ridiculous, okay. Anywho, any other questions, comments, discussion on any items A through F? 10A through F, from the board. Okay, any public comment? Anyone online? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion that was made, please say aye.
Aye.
One abstain.
So we've got four ayes and one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a little longer conversation than.
Hey, before you get up, Derek, can you, can you give us a quick update on how the paving program's going?
Yes. The contractor has all roads paved except South Esther, which is the entrance of, it's an entrance road off of Big Oak Road to Elbow, I believe it is. We were waiting on that stretch. It's actually, the road's in very rough shape, and we were waiting to see how much funds are left with all the unit prices because we think there's significant base damage that's done there. So we have everything else done in terms of pavement. They're working on still sealing some curb lines, manholes. They have to do striping, and now the safety improvements on Makefield Road, and then probably get on Esther in the next day or so. They were just waiting for this change order before a crew mobilized. But the next step is South Esther entrance and then get on the bike path change order that you guys issued.
And the reflectors on Skyler?
This, that is with, you approved that in your consent agenda. That is the line striping contract for the year, that's 7D. So I talked to that contractor today with hopes that it would be approved. They're about a week, two weeks out from mobilizing for our roads that need striping, so.
Thank you.
No worries.
All right. You're up, Madam Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The minute to reflect that the supervisors present this evening did meet an executive session prior to this meeting and I believe are going to reconvene after this meeting for a short time period, again, in executive session. I would say let's do it early tomorrow.
Oh, we need her, and she's not coming.
She is happy to come.
I asked her. I mean, I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I said I would stay up and finish by now, I'm just kidding, guys. I'll do whatever.
So could you do it by Zoom so you don't have to be here for the budget meeting?
I absolutely can. I do, I, I will make it work, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. If you guys commit 15 minutes, I'll stay awake, but I feel, now you are.
There's a lot to discuss.
Okay, so we, I will retract that we will reconvene after this meeting. We will probably, we will reconvene tomorrow before your budget committee meeting to discuss issues related to, we've discussed issue with reference to real estate litigation and employment will be continued tomorrow. As far as my report, very short, just when we were discussing issues earlier this evening, you authorized us to oppose a zoning hearing board application that is before your zoning hearing board on, I had the date, and now I apologize, it is on, I believe, the 18th of this month. So we will be attending to oppose a, an application based on the information that's been provided to us thus far. And that is my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor reports. I was looking at the calendar to, there it is. The, my report, Planning Commission will be meeting on Thursday, the 13th. Agenda items, anything you're aware of on Planning Commission?
I believe, right now, we're in the process of putting the final touches on the solar ordinance, and with any luck, we will have that done and presented to the Planning Commission on next Thursday, I believe they meet next Thursday.
And just, and what that is, it's not, it's an ordinance for folks or landowners that want to put up renewable energy generation, whether it's on your house, on your yard, what we call community solar or DG solar, which is usually in the area, range of like three to 10 acre sites. Then there's also utility scale, which is in the order of, you know, 100 megawatt, which would be a several, you know, a couple hundred acre site. Not something that's likely to happen here, but we know that's something that, that folks are interested in, and the state may be passing some community solar stuff in the next year or two that's making its way through committee. So we just want to be prepared with an ordinance so that we can guide that. It's not to promote renewable energy, it's not to buy renew, it's nothing to do with that, it's purely for, it's a land development ordinance.
Correct, correct, and it is renewable energy because it incorporates more than just solar.
Exactly.
I think you have to get the master plan on their agenda.
It's coming.
Took us like 20 years to pass the last one.
It's coming, I'll leave that for next year's chair. Supervisor Lewis?
I'm going to pass.
All right.
No report?
All right, I'll check her email. Supervisor McCartney?
Golf Committee met last week and discussed numerous things, including some dynamic pricing increases for 2026.
Thank you. And Supervisor Blundy?
None of my committees met, so I have nothing to report.
There you go. Discussion items, I don't think we have any. Other business, I think we, we already mentioned it, but I just want to note again, our budget presentations tomorrow and Monday, both at 7:00 PM right here. So a couple, a couple rounds of budget presentations before we get into actually voting on a budget. Another item, a lot of folks in town may be aware, American Water announced that they will be acquiring Aqua. I believe it's a all-stock acquisition. So American Water is the potable water supplier for, I think, everyone in the township, if you're not on, not septic, but well.
I think some people have.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, Morrisville.
So, a good chunk of the township, and then Aqua obviously bought our sewer system recently. They will be going, that will have to go through a series of approvals across multiple states, including in front of our own Pennsylvania PUC. Not that we have to make a decision tonight, but it may be something that if this board wants to chime in on, or anyone in the community does, we could potentially write some type of letter stating our position, yea, nay, or somewhere in between. Just throwing that out there. Any other, other business? All right. I don't believe we have any appointments or reappointments. Oh, yeah. Item 16 is additional public comment, just like item number five. So if you have a comment on non-agenda items and you'd like to make comment, please come[1746.16]